Good evening. I'd like to call the Peoria Public Schools District 150 Board of Education Meeting for November 24th, 2014 to order. Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Crawford?
Here.
Mr. Bateman?
Here.
Mrs. Ross?
Here.
Mrs. Butler?
Here.
Mrs. Kostic?
Here.
Mrs. Wolfmeier? Here. Thank you. Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have announcements from board members tonight?
I have one.
Mr. Crawford?
On Friday, December 5th, we will host our second College Colors and Career Day with a spotlight on the trades. Our high schools are inviting guest speakers in as well as holding a career fair to introduce and help inform students of various trades and other careers represented in the Peoria area. Please call the district office if you would like to represent your business or trade.
Thank you. Mrs. Kostic?
Thank you. The Peoria Public Schools is represented by 15 schools and nearly 700 fans at the Peoria Civic Center to help cheer on the Bradley Braves. Yay Bradley! During their win over North Carolina AT&T State.
AT&T State.
Oh, excuse me. Okay. Yesterday afternoon. The planned Avid trip was open to all district students and schools to allow them to take part in a fun college experience. Many students said they never, they had never experienced a college basketball game forever. So I think that that was a wonderful endeavor and we're so happy that we were able to, um...
Get the bragging rights.
Get the bragging rights.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I would like to announce that, and perhaps some heard about it through the local media, that last week, district staff had the opportunity to travel to Springfield and participate in a rally on school funding reform with colleagues from across the state. And it was a great opportunity to dieg law on Senate Bill 16 and what our funding needs are for education in Illinois. We will be, meaning the district will be hitting on that in a little bit as we're going to be asking individuals to sign a resolution supporting school funding reform in Illinois. So, there's more to come. Thank you, Dr. Laitner.
Thank you.
I have one. As we mentioned in our last meeting, we have finalized a mailing to go out to our community. All Peoria residents should receive a mailing in their mailbox next week. It includes dates, times, and location of our strategic planning meetings in January and February.
Thank you. Mr. Bateman?
Yeah, last week Harrison Primary School hosted the Parent University and we had our biggest turnout to date. It was awesome. I could believe the number of people that were there. They say we had 158 adults and 70 children that signed in. It seemed like a whole lot more than that when you're in the gym and just watching everyone engage. Thanks to Harrison for hosting our last Parent University for this semester. We will pick back up with Parent University on 22nd of January at Franklin Primary School. Also, last week I had the opportunity to attend the freshman/sophomore honor band at Bradley University. I was there actually watching one of my nephews play, but as I was sitting there, noticed that we had a student from Manuel High School, a young lady that plays flute, Molly McCoy. It's quite an honor to be selected for the freshman/sophomore honor band and just wanted to commend Molly for all her efforts. And that, it's playing an instrument and being that proficient takes a lot of, again, a lot of discipline, a lot of practice, and my hat's off to her for being selected.
Thank you. And I would like to, on behalf of the board and everyone in District 150, say congratulations to the Peoria High School football team. This past Saturday, they ended their season with a record of 11-2 in the IHSA Class 5A Final Four at Springfield Sacred Heart Griffin. It was their first Final Four appearance since 1988. Congratulations to Coach Thornton and the entire team at Peoria High. It was a fun team to watch this school year and we look forward to more great things to come next year. A big congratulation also goes out to Peoria High's LaCale London, who was voted All-State in 5A by the IHSA. It's just quite an honor. He is number 44 and plays defensive end. We are proud of him. We're proud of the whole team and all of our athletes that participated this year that finished up their seasons and were very successful. So, thank you and congratulations to all of them. Anybody else? Okay, that will bring us then to district presentations. We get to have our tax levy presentation this evening. Mr. Will Coxon? Screen down.
tonight. That's what we like to hear. Is this working? Oh, okay. I'm joined with, at the table with, by Mike McKenzie, who was instrumental in helping put this presentation together tonight. And Carla Eman is also here and she was our fact checker at the end of this presentation. There's a couple of things we'd like to accomplish tonight. First, we want to notify the board of where we are in the levy process. We'd also like to inform the public of our plans regarding the tax levy. And we'd also like to review with the board and the public where we are in the tax levy process and our recommendations for the tax levy for 2014. The levy, this is actually an interesting way to show our agenda for tonight. We're going to begin by talking about the levy process. We're going to go through some definitions because when you do this once a year, it's always good to kind of refresh what the definitions are in the levy process. We're going to talk about the schedule and planning, how we got to where we are now. Give a little bit of background on some statistics on tax revenue, EAV, tax rates, tax levy, and tax extension. And then we'll talk about our recommendations for the 2014 levy, our preliminary recommendations, what we would get from that levy, calculating the actual tax rates, and we'll end up with some key points just to summarize everything about the process and where we are right now. Definitions, there's really four main things we're going to talk about tonight. The EAV, equalized assessed valuation, and again, it represents one-third of the fair market value of all taxable property in a taxing district. So, our taxing district is Peoria School District 150. The levy is the amount of tax revenue that we request. The tax rate is an amount expressed in terms of $100 of equalized assessed valuation, and that's what's paid in property taxes. And the extension is the amount of taxes we actually receive. The process, we've spent some time estimating the revenues we need from the tax levy. Tonight, we're having our tax levy presentation. Historically, the board has done a publication of truth in taxation that I don't think we're required to do that, but we will do that in, for full disclosure to the community. At the next board meeting, we'll have the tax levy hearing and we'll ask the school board to approve the levy for 2014. And then by the last Tuesday in December, we're required to file the levy with the county clerk and our goal is to have that to the county clerk by December 19th. So, the planning process, we've talked with the county assessor, Dave Ryan, to get his estimate of where the EAV will be for this year. We've developed scenarios for projected district EAV related to the tax levy and the tax extension. We've determined the level of need for restricted funds that have an unlimited tax rate, and then, of course, the planning process, we take this information to the board for discussion. And again, just for background, this is the 2015 budget that the board approved, or summary of the revenue that the board approved at the September meeting. Of interest to our discussion tonight, property taxes represent 40% of our total budget, so it's $66 million. In comparison to the next largest source of revenue, which would be general state aid at 27%, so basically, it's, you're comparing the two largest sources, 66 million versus about 45 million. That's the bulk of our revenue. But again, property taxes, 40% is a huge chunk of our district budget. The, this takes the, or looks at our EAVs back to 2009. The school district EAVs, equalized assessed valuation, actually peaked in 2010 and has declined since 2010, about $100 million in equalized assessed valuation. And at our tax rate that's limited, the limited tax rates are about $3 per $100 of assessed valuation. So, that translates into a loss of about $3 million per year because of our lost EAV. This may be the most boring slide in the presentation. It's cut three lines that really don't go anywhere. If you look at the middle line, it's our operating tax rate, and it's basically stayed level for the last five years. And this is the tax rate for education fund, special ed, operation and maintenance, transportation, and IMR of Social Security. So, basically, it's just showing that our operating tax rate really has been level for these years with a declining EAV. The non-operating tax rate is really driven by debt service payments, PBC lease and bonds. And as you'll see in some later slides, the PBC lease payments are actually increasing and what's driving the overall increase in this tax rate. You can feel free to jump in if you... This is, again, just some historical information. This, again, is the change in EAV since 2009. And you can see there was an increase in 2010, a slight increase, and the 1.4 billion was the peak of our EAV. And since then, we've had declines, actually growing declines, 2.1, 2.2, and 2.9% decrease in our EAVs. Tax levy, again, this is what we request in property taxes, have been fairly steady. And then you can see the tax extensions, which is what we actually get, and these are tied directly to the changes in EAV generally. You can see that we had an increase in 2010, but our tax extensions have dropped in 2011, 12, and 13. And again, this, this kind of reinforces what we've talked about on the previous slides, but it does take, take us back a little bit further in history. The taxes extended, you could see that the district had fairly steady growth from 2003 to 2010. And then you can see our taxes extended dropping the last three years in 11, 12, and 13. One thing that is of interest, I think, is the type of property that we have in the school district. You can see that two-thirds of our property comes from residential property. Almost 30% comes from commercial property. We have an EAV of $2, or $210 from mineral, and Mike and I were talking about that today, and we have no idea what that is, but it's not very much EAV. But the bulk of our EAV does come from residential property and commercial property, and very little from any other sources. So, this is, this slide is the actual tax levy and extensions for 2013. And when I say 2013, this was the levy year, so this was levied in December of 2013 for taxes payable in 2014. So, this is what we've received the last calendar year. And just to walk through some of these columns, there are certain tax levies that are limited by statute. For example, the education fund, special education, O and M, any number that has a column, or a number in that first column, max rate, those are limited by statute in what we can levy. The others, like line two, is an unlimited levy. So, whatever we actually levy will be the taxes that we receive. So, just working across the first column for education fund, the maximum rate is $2.18 per $100 of assessed valuation. We levied 29.9 million. If, if that total levy was extended, the calculated tax rate would have been $2.29. That would have been extended against all of the property in the district. But by statute, it's limited to $2.18. So, the actual levy is, what, it's a million four, less than the actual levy. So, that's where the statute limits the amount of the extension. On the second line, tort liability, there is no maximum rate. So, we determined that our need was 6.4 million, which then generated a calculated rate of 49 cents per $100 of assessed valuation. And you can see the extension for tort liability was the 6.4 million and the 49.1 cents per $100 of assessed valuation. So, that, those are the two kinds of levy. It's either limited by a maximum tax rate or it has an unlimited levy. So, the first two lines give a good example of how that works. So, the preliminary 14 levy, our conversations with Dave Ryan, he, he shared that he was expecting an increase in the EAV for 2014 of 1%. So, when we, we develop the levy, we develop using a higher EAV to make sure that we hit our maximum tax rates. So, our levy, we're assuming that, we're basing that on a 3% increase in our equalized assessed valuation, and it generated these tax rates with this levy. So, education fund, we want to make, hit the maximum tax rate. Tort liability at 6.4 million need would generate a tax rate of 4.4767 cents and would generate a total tax rate of $5.15 approximately per $100 of assessed valuation. So, this is a comparison of what we're proposing to levy to, for 2014 compared to what we actually levied in 2013. And all of the levy amounts are less than what we levied last year except for IMRF and PBC lease payments. And we'll talk a little bit more about PBC, and we have another slide on that later. But the large increase in the PBC lease payment levy is a combination of two factors. One, we're recommending that we not abate the million five that we did last year. So, that contributes to that increase in the levy. And also, the PBC lease payments are going up by about $1 million this year. So, so the, the combination of those two generates an increase in the PBC funding requirements of 2.6, 2.7 million dollars. So, this is a summary of our debt service payments. And again, these are either PBC lease payments or bonds that the district has issued. And if you look at the change from 2013 to 2014, you can see an increase in the PBC lease payments of about 1.2 million dollars. So, that coupled with the, the fact that we're recommending not to abate the 1.1, or 1.5 million dollars this year contributes to the increase that I talked about on the previous slide in the PBC tax levy. So, this is, this is just another slide showing the same thing. Again, the PBC lease payments in the first column, you can see the 13 to 14, there's an increase of 1.2 million. The 1.5 million that we're not recommending that we abate in taxes this year, the sum of those two, again, gets us to the 2.7 million dollars. And against our increase in EAV, it has an increase in the PBC tax rate of about almost 20 cents per $100 of assessed So, we talked about the levy, and again, when I started off, I talked about the maximum tax rate and how that actually results in a lower extension for some, the funds that have a limit on their tax rate. So, we, we used a three-point, or a 3% increase to project the EAV for purposes of establishing the maximum tax rate. But what we will actually receive is more like a 1% increase. That's the current estimate of the increase in our equalized assessed valuation. So, the column 2014 likely extension, that's the amount of property taxes we're actually expecting to receive with a 1% increase in the EAV. And you can see the difference then for the funds that do have a maximum tax rate, the difference between the extension and the actual proposed levy. So, for the education fund, for example, that is limited to the $2.18, and because it's limited, the actual extension is going to be less than the proposed levy. One other thing we thought was important to point out is while the total EAV is projected to increase 1% this year, one of the important factors is the South Town TIF district is, has expired. So, that, the increase in EAV for that TIF is now included, will be included in our 2014 EAV. So, that's about 30, $30.6 million is the value of that EAV. So, if you take that out, the fact that we're receiving the incremental EAV from the TIF district, our recurring EAV is actually showing the same pattern we've seen in our overall EAV for the last several years, that the, I called it recurring EAV, is actually decreasing, again, by 1.3%. So, if you, if we didn't have the TIF this year, coming back on our tax rolls, our EAV would have decreased by 1.3% this year. Still have everybody?
Now, keep in mind, these are all estimates by Dave Ryan, the 1%, and we don't really know the EAV until April or so. So, we're estimating, and we have to levy a dollar amount. We can't levy a percentage. So, it's sort of playing with numbers a little bit, but...
Okay. Have a couple of examples here of what this actually means in dollars. So, this is computing property taxes from the 2013 levy. So, these are, these are pretty good numbers. Our rate-setting EAV was the $1.3 billion. If you divide that by 100, okay, this is our EAV that we're, apply the tax rate against. So, that's 13,034. The district tax rate was $5 per $100 of equalized assessed valuation. So, the property tax extension was $66 million. So, that's money that we expect, or expected to receive from the 2013 levy. For somebody with a home valued at 200, or $120,000, again, you divide that by three to get your equalized assessed valuation, and then divide it by 100 to get your tax base. So, that's $400 times the same tax rate would generate a property tax bill of $2,026.
For the, for the district's portion?
I was just getting ready to say, it's important to understand that that's just district's part.
Correct. Yes.
Because then there's more that goes on top of that makes up the total tax bill.
Correct. All the other taxing districts in, that overlap with Peoria School District So, for 2014, what we would expect to receive from the property, district revenue from the property taxes, and this was on an earlier slide, is, is a rate-setting EAV divided by 100 times our proposed tax rate of $5.15 per 100 would generate a property tax extension of $67.8 million. But the point of this slide is really to look at what that would mean for a homeowner. Again, the property tax, the EAV, and we're just using the average EAV to, for illustration purposes, on how that would affect a home. The $120,000 home with a 1.3 decrease in EAV would have a value then of $118,440. If you divide that by three, you have an EAV of $39,480 divided by 100, a tax base of $395, times our proposed tax rate would generate a property tax bill of $2,034. And that's an increase of $8 or less than one-half of 1%. This slide does the same analysis over a little longer period of time, just to show if you had a home valued at $120,000 versus those changes in, average changes in EAV that we talked about earlier. Over five years, that home value, if it, if the value of that home changed at the same rate as the total district EAV, over five years, that value of that home would have dropped 8%. The other two columns are just a factor of that. Our tax rate went up 5.5% over that time. So, the tax bill, actually for a typical homeowner, would have declined 2.9% over that period of time. And again, it's a primary factor is the change in the EAV during that period of time. The next slide we wanted to talk a little bit about was the effect of the Peoria TIF districts on school district revenues. So, this goes back to 2004 and the value of taxes, tax abatements from taxing districts. So, this is, this is information provided to us by the county clerk. These are the district tax rates, and we only included the tax rates that have a limited tax rate. The other ones, the PBC bond payments, or lease payments and our bond and interest, those have unlimited levies. So, the fact that the TIF is abating taxes, those tax, unlimited levies are just being charged against the other rate-setting EAV in the, in the district. So, the only thing that it's really affected is those limited tax rates. So, you can see over time, in 2004, the district basically was losing 1.7 million from the district. That's up to about 2 million now. Over 10, 10 years, the district's lost nearly $20 million because of these TIF districts.
And, I mean, some of this money comes back to us as part of general state aid calculation, and the city will always remind us of that fact, but that's, that's assuming general state aid is 100% funded, too. funded too, which we know isn't happening.
So the key points that I hope we covered. The district is expected to see a slight increase in the 2014 EAV after three years of decline. The end of the South Town TIF will add approximately $30 million to the district's EAV. Without the addition of this TIF, the district would realize a decrease of 1.3 percent in our EAV. The recommended levy for 2014 is less than last year's levy in all funds except IMRF and the PBC lease payments. Taxpayers will see a very slight increase in taxes over last year, assuming that property values follow the average change in EAV. However, given the decreases in property values the past three years, overall taxes will be below 2009 levels. And we also, key point in this presentation is that we're recommending that the board not abate the $1.5 million in lease bonds as it has the past two years. So with that, we'd be pleased to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Crawford.
Going back to what the city always reminds us of with regard to the fact that lost, lost value in the EAV because of TIS is made up for in general state aid. But historically, general state aid has been, as relative to how much we take in, has been declining for several years. So, I mean, not to say the city's wrong for saying that or whatever, but I mean, regardless whether or not that's calculated back in what we receive from general state aid, general state aid now is at about 27 percent, right?
It's prorated 89 percent.
Right, but I mean, in terms of making up the entire basket of funds from which we operate our schools, it's 27 percent of our. And of course, we learned this weekend at the school board conference that back in the 80s, that was around 48 percent. So that's gone down significantly. My other question is, the South Town TIF is coming off, so it's adding some to our EAV, which is a good thing for us. How, do we have any idea of how the TIF worked? I mean, we're supposed to, what we're supposed to see when the TIS end, we're supposed to see an increase in property values that we're told will eventually benefit the school district in the long run. Do we have any clue as to whether that has worked as promised?
Do you?
I don't know what the, I don't know what the rate setting of the, you know, the, I don't know what the, the $30 million was the increment part of the TIF. I don't know what the original amount of the TIF was, but I mean, that's all the...
Because I think that'd be, I think that'd be helpful for us to know going forward. So again, and I understand TIS are used by communities throughout the state to improve areas and, you know, incentivizes to get areas that otherwise maybe wouldn't be developed to have them developed. But nevertheless, I think we need to, the public needs to be made aware of whether or not these TIS work as promised.
Okay. We'll bring that to the next meeting.
Yeah, and I think, I think it just ought to be part of a long-term discussion, that's all.
Okay.
So at the next meeting...
Maybe just one more. Can you just more fully explain, like, the PBC lease payments and what that covers?
Go ahead.
I mean, the PBC lease payments, primarily the PBC lease payments are Harrison School, Glen Oak School, the Richwoods Project, so Richwoods, Northmore, Lindbergh, Keller extensions that were done 2009 or so. And when those, when those bonds were sold, and it was before my time, but they were designed, assuming a 3 percent increase in EAV, and they were kind of designed so that other things, as other things paid off, the payments of the PBC stuff kind of came on. So they structured it a little bit. Unfortunately, what has happened is we haven't seen those EAV increases. So now it's causing a rate increase because of the way it was structured, because it was making assumptions that had been true for, you know, 20 years probably before that. But obviously, it has not been true since 2010, so.
But that's primarily what it is, is those three big projects. Oh, and the Peoria High and Lincoln project too, that's one of them also, I'm sorry.
They put up the money, we pay them back essentially for the projects.
Yeah, they, they issued the bonds, and then over a period of time, we levy every year and we pay them every year in November, a lease payment instead of bond payments. It works out the same way, so. And just as a reminder, the 1.5 million abatements we had in '12 and '13, those were, those essentially went back to the taxpayers. So it was part of some planned property tax relief that we had, and we knew this year we weren't going to be doing that.
Well, I think we're pretty sure. I think the discussion, the discussion was that as long as the budget allowed it, that we would look at it every year. We did it for two years, and I think we decided last year that we probably were not going to be able to do it this year.
I just, at the last year's presentation presented, it's going to be tough to do.
Right.
The other, I'm sure the board knows, is the authority for the PBC to issue debt on behalf of the district has expired. So they, once the current PBC bonds and our lease payments to them, once those bonds are retired, they do not have the authority to issue more bonds and do projects on behalf of the school district.
How do they get that authority?
Well, it was in statute. I mean, it's in state statute, but then it was, that authority was withdrawn, so.
Would that be part of, if the state passed like a funding project for schools, and that would, would they reclaim that, would that authority be given to them again? Is that how that works?
I mean, they would have to change the statute if the state, or the state could do its own capital program and issue the bonds at the state level and fund district projects. That's probably less likely, both of those are probably unlikely to happen.
Number 19 with school funding, school construction grants. I think we're still on their list somewhere, waiting for them to start the school construction grants again.
Because the $34 million we got in the CDB grants, that did not go through the PBC.
No.
So they have a mechanism other than the PBC?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, yeah.
Typically, that's part of a state capital program, that the state issues, you know, billions of dollars in bonds and funds projects throughout the state, but the state hasn't had a state capital project, or state capital program for a number of years.
Okay. So very simply, overall, our tax rate, total tax rate is going up this year less than a half, around a half of a percent, correct? But making an assumption that the average home in Peoria, EAV did not increase, their tax bill will actually go down. Now, that's not going to be true for everyone, no?
The tax rate is going to increase from 509 to 515. The average, if you have an average increase of, or actually decrease of 1.3 percent, your tax rate will go up the half, the 0.4 percent.
But the tax bill will go down?
No, the tax bill will go up 0.4 percent.
Yeah, less than a half a percent.
Yeah, the tax bill will go up less than a half a percent.
But I thought one of the slides said that the average home, because of a decrease in EAV, would not go up.
No, no.
The tax bill would not go up, I thought.
The tax bill will go up, in that example, it goes up $8, which is 0.4 percent. That's that half a percent. So even though the rate's going up from whatever that 5 percent or whatever, I don't, so the tax rate goes from 5.06 to 5.15. And the property bill increases by $8.
Okay.
Which is 0.4 percent.
Okay.
And again, that increase is being driven by the PBC lease levy.
And this rate is assuming a 1 percent increase, which we won't know until April.
Right.
Just as a reminder, you know, it's confusing every year, so.
Any other questions? So at our December board meeting, we'll actually have a hearing on this, and then you will ask us to vote on the tax levy, setting the tax levy. So if any board members have any other questions between now and December 15th, please be sure to get to Mr. Wilcox, and so he can research those and present the questions and answers to all of us so that we have all the information on the 15th, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
I need a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the November 10, 2014 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any comments or questions? Would you call the roll?
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mr. Bayman?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mrs. Bledland?
Aye.
Mrs. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Woodburn?
Aye. Thank you. We are now at the audience opportunity to address the board. As a reminder, this is a business meeting of the Board of Education held in public, not a public meeting. It is not a question and answer session, and it is not a debate, so there will be no response from the horseshoe unless one of us has comments, unless the audience comments are completed. Recognizing everyone's First Amendment rights, we still ask that you refrain from speaking about subjects, topics relating directly to district personnel, and also those not germane to the Board of Education's authority. We also ask that you refrain from using inappropriate language and keep a civil tone to your remarks. Please also keep in mind that just because something can be said does not necessarily mean that it should be said. When you are recognized, please come to the podium and give your name for the record. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. No one under 18 years of age may address the board unless accompanied by a parent, guardian, or a teacher without the consent of the majority of the board. Board members are also available by phone and/or email. This contact information is available on the district website and in the school calendars that parents receive from their school. Sharon Cruz.
How many of you know how much you have paid James Rayner, the reading consultant from North Carolina? From September 2010 to October 19 of this year, he has received $290,000 for 177 days in Peoria. That is more than Dr. Lathan was paid for a contractual year on the job. I don't know how many hours a day he puts in for his standard fee of $1,800 per day. My guess is that his day isn't as long or as demanding as a teacher's day, and his pay is better. In 2012, 25 teachers were paid a stipend of $26 an hour for six hours of training for a total of $3,900. Were teachers paid to attend other sessions held after the school day? I hope so. For the many school day sessions, subs had to be paid for teachers. The cost of food may have been involved. How can you justify this ongoing expense? This administration spent $2,628,000 on McGraw-Hill textbooks. Considerable money was spent on teacher guides that should thoroughly explain how to teach the company's reading mastery program. Rayner is a certified national trainer of this company's direct instruction method, which means the program's weaknesses will not be acknowledged. Rayner received his Bachelor of Science degree in 1974. His resume does not mention any coursework since then. He taught third, fourth, and fifth grades from 1975 to 1977. He taught kindergarten from 1980 to 2001. He has not taught since. This means he has never taught children the elementary reading skills about which he now claims to be an expert. Every district reading teacher has more experience in the classroom, and most have more recent and more advanced college coursework. How insulting to our teachers. His resume claims that his consulting has helped six districts raise test scores. Well, we know that didn't happen in District 150. No Child Left Behind created a testing frenzy. Ironically, test preparation, consultants, and programs promising miracles, and the tests themselves, might well be the reason students aren't learning. Interesting learning is not even encouraged, just boring repetition required for test preparation. Teachers are the scapegoats, so no one is searching for the real obstacles to learning that keep many individual students from educational success. Hyping students up to go to college is not making them college-ready. 800 students attending a Bradley versus North Carolina game won't help either. Thank you.
As I listen to the tax levy discussion, whether or not to raise taxes, lower taxes, whatever, $290,000 to this young man from North Carolina, he's an expert because he's from North Carolina. Everybody from North Carolina is an expert, obviously. $290,000 for not even a school year? Are you serious? Unbelievable. I'd like to talk for a little bit about Quest. They had an article in the paper the other day, written by Pam Adams, about failing grades and how that's going. I mean, is it going? We're negotiating in a back room with Quest. We've not brought anything to the horseshoe. We're going to approve an extension, I'm sure, within the next month or so, without any discussion in public. It's amazing to me. 900 kids at Woodruff were displaced because Woodruff was too small a high school. It was too small. We needed to get rid of one high school. We couldn't support four high schools. Now we got a high school with 190 children. 35 children below the recommended maximum, and it says quite clearly in the guidelines for charter schools that when a person drops out of the charter school, they must be replaced from the list created by the waiting standard for that school district. 35 people are not replaced because one of the administrators or board members, I guess it was in an earlier article, said we can't replace those children on the waiting list because they're troubled students. They're troubled students. Some of these kids have three Fs, according to this. I mean, how troubled are they? Are they troubled? But we don't replace them, and they get by with continuing, and they come to us, you people, and beg for more money because they don't have the 35 kids that makes them at their full complement. If you saw the three sailors being battered about and having plastic bags put over their head in Istanbul, Turkey, four trips in four years to Istanbul, Turkey. Two principals and two, and two terms, basically from Turkey. What's the Turkish connection with concept schools? We don't need to be connected to the Turkish government or the Turkish nation when they won't even support us as a NATO partner in the fight against ISIS. I think it's dangerous to go to Istanbul, Turkey. If they're going again this year, I don't know, but they've been four years in a row. Nobody even comments about it. I don't understand that, I really don't. They're intending to co-op with other schools because they don't have enough students to play sports. And yet, you know, we don't say, go back to Central, go back to Manuel, go back to Richwoods. If you want to play sports, go to one of your home schools. Thank you.
Test scores is the number one topic, it seems like lately, except for around the horseshoe. It's in the newspaper, it's on my mind, I know it's on everybody's mind that I've spoke to in the last couple of weeks. They want to know what's happening in District 150. They want to know why our students are failing. I don't see anybody really trying to find out an answer. And it's not a pass-the-buck, ladies and gentlemen. We cannot blame this person or that person. We are talking about our children and their future. We don't get a do-over. These kids' education, it's a one-time thing. They don't get a do-over, and we are not doing right by them. We're not. We're failing, and we're failing terribly. I am so embarrassed to say that I graduated from this school district. This is not even close to the district that I was in. Not even close, ladies and gentlemen. Now, I will tell you this, I went to Charter Oak today for Grandparents' Day, and it was absolutely phenomenal, to see those kids and how happy they are when we show up there to see them. And that's amazing. But I'll also tell you this, I saw disruption in classrooms that I would have never seen there a year ago. That school is still feeling the repercussions of what happened last school term. And I guarantee you that if it's happening there, it's happening everywhere in our district. And it's going unchecked. Dr. Lathan talks about accountability. She holds everyone's feet to the fire but her own. And you, ladies and gentlemen, were elected officials to hold her feet to the fire, and you're failing. And I'm tired of it. We're all tired of it. Elections are coming. There is going to be a shakeup in this city, I guarantee you. We elected a non-person, ladies and gentlemen, in April of this year. A non-person. We dethroned somebody on this board, and the public didn't even know who was going to be in that position. We dethroned somebody on this board, and the public didn't even know who was going to be in that position. What does that tell you as a group? You need to really go back into your boardroom and look at each other and figure out what you're going to do to change the problems in this district, because continual word-salad rhetoric, we are sick and tired of.
Sevino Sierra.
You know, when I hear other people complaining too, it's enough to make a preacher cuss. So don't, you know, if you hear something you dislike, agree and bear it, because I got the law on my side. The chair forgot to mention the parochial school in this town. They're in the same class as our private high schools, our public high schools. And in fact, they wallop Central, if you really want to know. And I'm glad that Notre Dame got to play at the stadium because their fan base is terrific. And you couldn't find a parking spot there. I come back in from, coming from a funeral in Davenport, and my daughter was going to stop and see if they needed help in the concessions because Manuel was in charge of the concessions for that game. You couldn't get in. And you could imagine how much money that brought into the city and to the high schools in town. And this is what I said. You better get off your high horses and get that stadium taken care of. It's ashamed that you people have helped let it go down. And, you know, you say, "Don't be criticizing this person, that person." We're talking to you as a whole, you know, excluding the new member that's sitting up there right now. And we hope that he really brings something new to this group. But just remember to get off your high horse. What are you doing with the truancy? You're going to have a meeting about that and all this, you know? I think you're not solving one problem and you jump to another one. And so people are, they've lost a lot of faith in you people. So, and I apologize to Ms. Ross there. She don't like the term "you people." But what do you want me to, when I address the board, what do you want me to call you? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any comments from board members? Thank you. That will bring us to our information items tonight. Number one is Board Policy, Board Policy 7:250. It's an administrative procedure on measures to control the spread of head lice at school. Dr. Lathan, do you want to comment on this?
Sure. And from the policy committee, they reviewed the administrative procedure. A few changes have been made, just updating the information that goes out to parents. Also, before a student can be excluded, they will contact school, District Attorney. Parents now can provide proof that the child is being treated, and they possibly will not be excluded from school, or there will be limited movement in the school if there's a chance for other students contracting that. So just some change to that as it relates to treatment of students. And then the decision to exclude a student, notifying the board attorney that exclusion takes place. Anything else, Ms. Kostic or Mr. Redberg?
No.
Okay. Reported requests under the Freedom of Information Act and status of such requests.
Since our last board meeting reported on November 10th, 2014, we received four new Freedom of Information Act requests. Of these new requests, two were filled. There were three pending requests noted on the November 10th, 2014 board report. Two were filled. We received 129 requests for this calendar year.
Thank you. That brings us to purchase orders over $2,500. Are there any questions from Mr. Wilcoxon? Seeing none, we'll go on to the consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda consists of the payment of bills, the human resources report. The proposed action is the appointment, employment, compensation, performance, resignation, retirement, or discharge of an employee, payment for travel. Number four is the field trip approval for the Peoria High senior trip. The proposed action is that the Board of Education approve the senior field trip for the Peoria High School class of 2015 seniors to travel to Six Flags Great America in Gurnee, Illinois on May 16, 2015, returning on May 17, 2015, per Board Policy 6:240. The cost of the trip is to be paid by the class of 2015. No students will be denied attendance due to inability to pay. Number five is the approval of financing resolution for the lease purchase of district copiers. The proposed action is that the Board of Education approve the attached lease purchase resolution and authorize the district's chief financial officer to act on behalf of the Board of Education in consultation with district legal counsel to approve and execute a lease purchase agreement with Commerce Bank to finance the district copier replacement project. Number six, the resolution to support school funding reform in Illinois as it is outlined in Senate Bill 16 or subsequent iteration thereof. Proposed action is that the Board of Education approve a resolution recognizing the need for reform of the formula used to allocate state funding to local school districts and join the Funding Illinois Future Coalition to support improvement and consequently encourage the efforts to secure passage of legislation by the Illinois General Assembly intended to improve the state's education funding formula as proposed in Senate Bill 16, the School Funding Reform Act of 2014 or subsequent iteration thereof. Number seven is Board Policy 2:260, the Uniform Grievance Procedure. The proposed action is that the Board of Education waive the first reading and adopt the changes made to Board Policy 2:260 Uniform Grievance Procedure as presented. Are there any of these items a board member would like pulled for a separate vote? Could I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda? Are there any questions or comments? Dr. Lathan, do you want to comment on several of these items first, and then if board members have questions after that?
Sure. Let's see. Field trip for Peoria High's annual field trip. They went last spring. And once again, they're going again next May. The resolution for the lease purchase of district copiers. Last board meeting, the board approved the agreement with CDS. They were offering an interest rate of 4.03 percent. Commerce Bank provided us an interest rate of 1.99 percent. So that's why we're asking for the board to support the agreement with Commerce Bank. Senate Bill 16, or any changes that might come after that, relates to school funding. Just a reminder, it relates to general state aid. District 150 could see an increase of to, up to $8 million annually if a new funding formula is created in the state of Illinois. And then changes to the Uniform Grievance Procedure. We cleaned that up. We added the board attorney also as another complaint manager. We have a male and female per the requirement. And then we cleaned up some language as it relates to like bullying and just some language changes. The last time the policy was changed was in 2007, and so we just went through and updated that. Did I miss anything, Ms. Kostic or Mr. Redberg?
Just to be sure everybody understands, the Uniform Grievance Procedure is not a procedure about grievances against uniforms.
Right. Oh, no, not against uniforms. Oh, no.
It's just an overall grievance procedure where if a parent or staff member has a concern or has a grievance, they can, there's a procedure for them to move forward with that.
Yes. Thank you. No, not about uniforms.
The first, when I first read that, I... Mr. Redberg.
I would just add that...
Is that on?
The policy is based upon the model policy published by the Illinois Association of School Boards.
Okay.
Our policy will now be in conformity with that policy.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Ross?
I just have a question on the explanation that you gave on the copiers. Just a quick question. Commerce Bank's proposal for the percentage is 1. what? It's 1.99 percent. Okay. Is that, is that through the life of the loan, or is that an initial amount?
Through the life of the loan.
Through the life of the loan.
Any other questions?
Do you need any clarification on Senate Bill 16?
No, I mean, we had the presentation and then a copy of the resolution.
We had the presentation, of course. Once again, right now where it stands, it will need to go through several versions if it gets approved. But this is just asking the board to support the formula as it stands now, based on the proposed calculations. But we definitely know it's going to change and hope that it's passed, that it'll benefit District 150 as it relates, and that the most neediest of school districts and children will receive that additional funding.
Anybody else? Okay. Would you call the roll?
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mr. Bateman?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mrs. Winkler?
Aye. Thank you. Motion passes. That brings us to deliberation agenda, the discipline.
Number eight is revocation of board probation. The proposed action, is that the revocation of board probation listed on the report dated November 24, 2014 be approved as presented.
Would you call the roll?
Mr. Crawford?
Obstain.
Mr. Bateman?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mrs. Winkler?
Aye.
Number nine, expulsions. The proposed action is that the expulsions listed on the report dated November 24, 2014 be approved as presented.
Second.
Would you call the roll?
Mr. Crawford?
Obstain.
Mr. Bateman?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kasten?
Aye.
Mrs. Winkler?
Aye.
Students expelled by the board are referred to by number, therefore ensuring privacy. Board action concerning the students has been decided in executive session. Number 10, revocation of expulsions held in abeyance. The proposed action is that the revocation of expulsions held in abeyance listed on the report dated November 24, 2014 be approved as presented.
Second.
Would you call the roll?
Mr. Crawford?
Obstain.
Mr. Bateman?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mrs. Winkler?
Aye. Thank you. That brings us to presentation and suggestions by board members. Do we have any for this evening?
I attended...
Mr. Crawford?
I attended the Illinois Association of School Boards and Illinois Association of School Administrators and the IAS, you know, all the, the School Board Conference in Chicago. ISBO, IASBO, yes. This past weekend. I'll have a report for you on the next board meeting. I just didn't have a chance to compile all my notes.
Sure.
But it was a good conference, and I enjoyed it.
Good.
Also, want to thank the board and also taxpayers for allowing me to go to the conference this weekend. It was very enlightening. A lot of very important topics discussed. Some very good speakers that really highlighted, you know, the challenges and also things that are going well also. So I, like Mr. Crawford, will have a report back on, you know, why learn what sessions I went to, that kind of thing.
Okay. Thank you. We'll look forward to that in December. Any other comments or suggestions or presentations by board members? Mrs. Ross?
I'm not sure if it's, it's not a report, but just a kind of an idea to work at coming, the coming year, getting more parents, getting in touch with more parents, and particularly targeting certain parents, because each, each board meeting, we have a number of students that are suspended, expelled. And it just, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't decrease, it seems to increase. So, and I think that I will like to kind of bring this back in the form of maybe a recommendation at maybe our next meeting to see how we can get the, get our parents, particularly those parents of the children that we're having the most problems with, connected. You know, making a special effort to get them connected. I know in the previous years, when my children were going to school, and I know that was a while ago, we had to register them, you know, in school every year. And we've, with automation and technology and that, sometimes I think we lose that, that personal touch. And maybe a few years back, we did some of that where we had, parents had to come in and register their children. And I just think that we have to come up with strategies to get it and get our parents in front of, in front of us however we can. So if I'd like to kind of put it in, in perspective and in writing, come back with a suggestion.
Okay. Good.
Just like I said, I echo Ms. Ross's concern, especially when you look at the number of primary school children we're seeing on discipline reports. My biggest concern in this is what are we doing now to address the behavior and discipline within those children, working with their families? Might, because if we don't do something now, those same children will be on our discipline reports in the middle school. They'll be on our discipline reports in senior when they get to high school. They'll end up out on the streets because we'll end up expelling them because we'll be full elsewhere, and there won't be a place for them to go. And ultimately, we as taxpayers will continue to pay for them for years to come as they sit somewhere in a penal system, because we didn't take the time to address the behavior and the discipline at a time in their lives where we had the most opportunity to make an impact in these children's lives. So.
Anybody else, presentation or suggestions? Any reports from board committees? Mr. Crawford?
January 6 at noon, Building Committee.
Okay.
Mrs. Winkler? Yes. Last Thursday, November 20th, the Parent-Teacher Advisory Committee met. We are wrapping up our discussion on personal electronic devices for classroom learning. At the next meeting, we'll be bringing forward a statement from out of that committee, and where now that issuer topic will go.
Okay.
One thing I would recommend for that committee, Caterpillar does actually have a program where they encourage employee-owned devices. And you might want to touch base with Caterpillar and see how they manage that, because it is something that, I don't know that it's a big trend. I do know that there are people that do have their own devices, and there are ways that Caterpillar manages the security and access and that. So I just offer that as another data point to check and see how that's being managed.
Any other committee reports? Could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you.
All right. That was, that was real short.